On what, if anything, we should do in light of the projections. Get an update on the voluntary merger and any discussion we want to have on that. Item number four is to review the BRMS and ID parking and traffic plan. Number five, act upon and discuss the administrators' report. Any... Number six, CESU committee reports. Number seven, the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the previous meeting and approval of the warrants which have been previously distributed. And we'll set the next meeting date and agenda and any other business. Everyone set with the agenda? Oh, I don't know. What we'll do is open up to public comment first, and if anybody's here for any particular item on the agenda, then we can move the agenda for that item forward. So at this point in time, I'll open it up for public comment if there is any. If you could introduce yourself and have the floor. Anyone?
I'm Joe O'Brien, Facilities Coordinator for the GIMs.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
I'm Will Mott, I chair the history of Brown's River.
Okay.
I'm Brad Geisler, I'm on the board of the Brown's Library.
Okay.
I'm Holly Hall, I'm the director of the...
Oh, gosh, we could have a captive audience if we move number four to the end. Gotcha. All right. Would everyone be okay if we moved the parking and traffic plan to item number two?
Yep. It'd be fine. I just wanted to get... So Joe, O-B-R-I-E-N?
That's correct.
And Linda Wilmot?
W-I-L-L-M-O.
Thank you. And Ann?
Do you really need to spell it for us?
I'm sorry. I didn't...
Brad Geisler, B-R...
As it sounds.
...O-D-K-H-U-I-Z.
No problem. I could've guessed that.
Okay.
And Molly, was it?
Holly.
Molly, Holly?
Holly. But H.
Oh, Holly. Okay. And what's your last name, sir?
Holly H. T. A.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. You all set? We'll move on to, formerly known as item number four, the traffic plan review. So just from a board perspective, this is the first time this board has, I guess, been had an opportunity to look at the plan. We got the plan distributed perhaps this morning or yesterday, maybe? So we haven't had much time to review it. So if somebody could provide the board with a bit of an overview, objectives of the plan, I think that would get the discussion going. And what, if any, action is needed from this board?
I have some bigger drawings where we compare it to that one, which will help. One of our residents, Andy Rowe, who is a parent of...
Yep.
...here, has been working with us. Awesome.
That's great.
Andy Rowe's been working with us with Lamro and Dickinson. He met with us when we started working on this about a year ago, taking a look at possibilities in order to solve a couple of issues. First issue is the condition of the parking area in the parking lot or the driveway in the parking lot. The second issue is the number of parking spaces that we have and the overload that you see throughout the year. In fact, Browns River, this winter, was plowing the front field and parking of 20 cars there when Brown was frozen, parking lot being pulled. And the third piece, I said, but the third piece is to improve on the quality of and quality and safety of walking through school. And so we've done work with Lamro and Dickinson. We reviewed with safe routes to school. They've given input to us on this plan. At the moment, we're fortunate that when we did, we've done subsoil tests and the soils that we have underneath this pavement is good quality, good quality gravel, good quality drainage. And the project is one in which we're not, cost is not as much as what Mansfield and Richmond paid. I don't know. When that parking lot was up in Campbell's Hump, that project was more than $300,000 in rain. And it was costly because of the whole subsurface was taken care of, new sewer, new power lines, all that had to be done. This plan does not include that. What this plan includes is a change in traffic flow and a change in additional parking spaces. What we see on the plans in gray are the additional sections that would be added to the plan for parking. And the most parking we would get is out in the back of that Browns River, and that would be pushing the soccer field back somewhat so that we could get three sections of parking there, three lines of parking. And that would really solve the issue of the access parking needs. The other piece that we would do is that we would create drop-off areas for both Underhill ID School and Browns River, which tends to be the biggest issue we have in all of our schools. It's the number of cars that are dropping kids off in the morning and in the afternoon. If you've ever been here, in the afternoon, you know, but that's like, especially in the afternoon. The ID area, you could tell that there are, the drop-off would now be out where the multipurpose entrance is. And I believe, as far as the spaces are there, that we have five spaces there. And the Browns River drop-off would be along where now there's parking up against the lawn over by the gym at Browns River. There are nine spaces for drop-off there. When we presented this, we would also have some improvements in handicap parking at Browns River out front. That would be the only parking over at Browns River, with three handicap spaces. We'd increase this little lot in the front on the left as you come in. Five additional spaces that we would create there. We would also widen the curve that comes around at the front of the ID school. Traffic flow would come in through from the library area. We'd come into the parking lot and go into an extended area, do a curve around the parking lot for drop-off over at Browns River. And we've gotten some opinions from other people about whether or not we would only use access for buses in front of Browns River and have traffic come back. Two-way traffic during school time or drop-off pickup time, and then it would be only for buses. If we were to have two-way traffic coming back out by the library, we would shorten the island where the flagpole is now. The island would be made smaller. It would be a sidewalk that comes across there, but it would be a smaller sidewalk, a smaller area of the flagpole monument. The idea of having only buses going one way and only buses through Browns River, that tends to be the biggest issue in the after hours. It's the dismissal of kids getting out there and getting cars and parking all the way up to the front. So one of the possibilities would be to have an hour in the morning where there's only one-way traffic, only for buses, and safely in the afternoon. At the moment, the plan, and I think John, you distributed that, right? The estimate on cost. Andy's estimate is about $160,000 for this work. Really, we don't have to move any lights. We don't have to, as I said, do any of the substructure work. And so that helps us a lot with this project. I'll entertain questions or thoughts about the traffic flow one way. We also, as John just mentioned before the meeting, we have to spend, according to Jericho Phil, we have to spend 3% of our costs on landscaping. It's about $5,000 to $6,000.
Just so I, before we go into questions and concerns and thoughts, are you, if you can just describe, you know, the process for this project? I assume you're looking for feedback from this board on this proposal?
Yeah.
Are we looking to have this included as a capital item on next year's budget? Just talk us through what our role is in this.
At the moment, we're doing this, reviewing the plan itself. And the funding question has been brought up to Mount Mansfield's Facilities Committee and to the school. That answer, can I answer that?
As it stands, the Facilities Committee took a seconded motion to the full board, and it was approved to spend up to $180,000 on this project. I guess what I would say is if you folks weren't able to contribute to it, it would be welcomed, as money is tight on everyone's budget. And we've tried not to send our financial share into a condition. But as it stands, it's feedback. We are looking for, obviously, over there. It needs to have all interested parties aware of what is...
Okay.
So the board has a plan for the financing of the project. And that will also very much depend upon how this FY14 budget turns out when the final audit is done and what kind of money is left over totally after the audit is full. And that will deal, the plan would be to do the work, if the money is there, to finance it, to get the job done in the summer of '15 or something. So we're basically asking the ID board, right, at the moment, for any feedback that you see affecting the complicated preschool to raise for kids.
Good. All right. Who wants to start?
So just to be clear, the Facilities Committee would, right now, has identified funds or has a plan to fund this without contribution from UID?
That's correct.
Was the motion that was seconded in the full board, was that just about $180,000 or about, did it include in the use of the estimated surplus to, that might be different, which is a dollar amount? Actually, was the whole piece to include that? We would spend up to $180,000 of any audited surplus that would be found at the end of the year. From the MNDSD, yes. Thank you.
And if such a surplus doesn't materialize?
I hope they said there would be some money there.
Yes.
So I have a question on the actual flow, traffic flow.
Yes.
So we are moving congestion from one place to another.
Where is congestion right now?
So right now, I have both kids in one tier and the other one over there, and there's congestion right here at the entrance with buses and people dropping kids off, then immediately going up in front of the Browns River and dropping kids off, and the buses, same issue. And some parents don't have any kids in middle school, so they just go from ID and they go down. So now we're just moving the traffic to the parking, where people are actually trying to park the cars and walk from parking to middle school or to ID. And we're going to route the traffic through the middle of the parking lot and potentially cause...
Can we stop middle school?
I know how it looks.
Part of the concern there was the same thing, was how can we keep car traffic and bus traffic separate? And when it was on paper, it looked like it was going to create as many problems as solving. But the two principles there, Mike Perry and Martin Carbone, both said that the, once parents learned that, no, you can't just go up to the front door and drop your child off, that you need to pull into these spaces, that now the traffic flow there is much more manageable, it's less confusing, less congested, and the students are stable. So the biggest concern for our committee looking at this, and this isn't set in stone, but is the safety of the students getting to the building. By, he didn't mention, but the idea or the proposal is to put holders on the racks across the road so cars can't park there. There won't be anybody walking across to, unattractive.
No, I don't mean traffic by the entrance to the school, by the actual parking lot.
Yes.
Because all the teachers, everybody, faculty, it's parking, parking lot.
And that's why, if you widen out and make room for two lanes, that can be accommodated since the big pines are off the side of Browns River, that whole parking lot, it would be needed to be to create enough space for two things.
Yeah. Was it considered to actually move the spaces in front of ID toward the bus loading zone so that way the ID traffic, those who don't go to middle school, they can just continue out together with buses and just get out and not go through the parking lot itself?
But at that point, the option we're considering is to only have bus traffic going through, and cars wouldn't be going that way anyway.
But it's only short section by the island?
Yeah.
That's all, that's what we are talking. Plus, you have all the faculty from ID that's parking on the left side, parking.
It's certainly something to look into, changing, closing, swapping spaces.
So basically, just pull the five spaces back toward the loading zone so anybody who doesn't have to go to middle school, they can just go out.
But if we take that exit away?
They don't have to U-turn. They would just follow the same path.
Now, this is closed.
That's closed.
If the Browns River...
You have to come around here and go back out.
This map, it's showing traffic going...
Yeah, it does.
But one of the ideas we are entertaining is making that one way for the hour in the morning.
Correct. Just for one hour. I'm saying, open the traffic fully.
Yeah.
And make this just one way, and everybody has to go only one way. So that way, you don't create a problem of two-way traffic in the morning. Because this place is crazy in the morning, I can tell you that.
I had two students come around here, trust me. It was that same way 10 years ago.
Yeah. Nothing changed.
No.
No, I welcome any change.
I had the same concern. I also had the same, like, two concerns with the idea. One is the hour in the morning hour, like, what if you're on the edge? When do you know that that, how will you know when that changes from 9:00 to 10:00? You have this, you know, if I'm running late for work and it's 8:58, I'm going to just go the way I want, you know? And I also am looking at this, and I would make a U-turn, not to be too bad, but if I, this can back up 15 minutes just to get through that parking lot to leave after I drop my child off at ID. And I'm not going to have the time to wait 15 minutes. And I think a lot of people are going to endanger themselves and others by either just waiting for, just dropping their kids off right here because they have to, then they could U-turn.
Like the five.
They can U-turn here or go out there and bypass all of this because everyone's going to want to bypass all of that.
But one of the ideas that one of the facilities members came up with is a crossing bar, just like you'd find on a railroad track.
I'd U-turn.
You'd know when you couldn't go.
I'd U-turn right there.
Yeah, what she's saying. If you go this way, you're going to get stuck.
For a long time.
Yeah.
This would always be two-way, wouldn't it?
Yes. This would always be two-way.
So I would try to not, I would try to park at one of these two and U-turn to leave instead of waiting 15 minutes after I dropped my kid off.
Why do you see this taking 15 minutes?
Because unless there's...
If this is two-way over here, if this is going this way...
So you're going to have these eight cars.
But these are, this is only drop-off.
Right. So they're dropping off, and you have 15 more cars we need to pull in there, and I need to go because I dropped my kid off. And they go one, one, one. How do I, is there a lane just to go around and leave without having to get in there?
Wouldn't you come down?
No, this is closed now.
Oh, that's closed.
That's closed now.
Because there's more than nine cars. There could be 30 cars.
Yeah, this is a two-way road, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. And adding a two, adding a two-way road, that becomes even more dangerous. Because now, all of a sudden, anybody who doesn't want to wait is going to come this way toward this parking lot.
And they're just going to go and drop their kids off here in the back to avoid it, or they're just going to find ways to avoid going through there.
It's going to be an administrator's responsibility, the administrators are going to, we found the same thing at Jericho because Jericho changed their mind. It just takes a week, so the administrators are around just to make sure people do the right thing and following the flow and dropping off at the right place and not parking in front of the school and so forth. So it will take some time. But two options of the one way or both ways is still up in the air, as like I said, so we can make an impact on that.
Yeah. I'll offer perhaps a different type of feedback than what we've been talking about. You know, just, I'd say the bus loading zones are in the, like, ideal locations for drop-off and pickup. And it seems as though if we could leverage that more in the, in the cars being dropped off and picked up, that would, I mean, it just seems like having that Browns River side, and I know you're interested on the hillside, but we can't, you know, we can't resist, I guess. It just, it just seems as though, like we've been saying, that the wait time for our drop-offs in order to get out is going to be crazy, and that can cause some pretty frustrated parents trying to get to work, and you never know what they're going to do in that situation, right, to get, drop off the kid, my kid's in school.
The option, it's real simple, is? Yeah. I said you're along with this earlier. I mean, there's, sometimes it is a matter of parents adjusting.
Right. I guess the, right, but the concern is, we don't want to have a situation where...
You don't want to create...
There's more problems. And I'm just, there seems to be a lot of real estate over there at that, the Browns River bus loading zone, where we, you could have both cars and buses take advantage of that area.
And that's not an issue with both, that whole school. Where the bus, where the bus loading is now, traffic can flow back and forth in front of the ID school in one way. We never have enough bus, more buses than can fit in each of these.
Right. I mean, there's a lot of room there.
So there's a lot, there is room.
And I'm wondering if that's, I mean, it just, it seems like it's going to be difficult to get the, and that's why you're saying buses only, so that you force the traffic to use that. Okay.
And did they...
And I think that's the only way you're, you're going to be able to get folks to use that loading zone, is if it's buses only.
Yeah. What the middle school is concerned about is the, if this is one way going, if it's the one way going in front of the middle school, that it's going to be difficult and continuous about stopping parents from dropping kids off in front of the school.
Right. That's why you block it off, right? Right. You have to block that off.
It's either that or not allow any traffic in there, car traffic.
Right. Right. With buses only. My other feedback on a different note is that it, there's all, it seems like, you know, I drop off, I never pick up, so this is personal experience, but on the pickup side, I know that there's a lot more traffic because everybody's picking up like at the exact same time. And I'm not sure what, like, those five spots are, you know, I mean, that's like a little token appreciation for the first five that show up, but you've got, I don't know how many David, parents are, different cars are waiting to pick up students. Is it?
Five to ten.
Is it more than that? I mean...
No, I mean, because they don't all stop. Some people stop and then this is the school. But people probably, I'd say five to 10.
Five to 10 pickups?
Sure. Us or for Browns River?
For us.
Okay.
So there's a...
So there are people that are parked in the library, parking lot, walk down.
So I was thinking there might be more, but if it's five to 10, then I guess the question would be, if it's 10, you know, let's say on a busy day, you know, Friday maybe afternoon, you've got 10 cars waiting to pick up. We've got spots for five. Presumably, all the other close spots are taken, so they're going to be searching, you know, for a spot. And they'll end up somewhere in that back parking lot? Is that the, right? And then they would walk to pick up their child at the school.
Middle school hopes to have staff parking in the back, and so the ID parking would be in front and hold visitor spaces to be any parking lot. As I mentioned, perhaps some spots could be labeled where they all, people, their parents, Campbell's Hump and Richmond, they have those.
I think that would be a good, because again, you're worried about the, I want to get close, I'm going to park wherever I can park, I'm not going to go find, because the other thing, the unfortunate thing is, you never know if there's spots back there, right? I have the exact same parking lot where I work, and you're almost like, if you see a couple of cars there, you're like, ah, it must be full, because I can't turn my truck around in that parking lot anyway.
I will tell you, though, from experience with my kids, I always, at the end of the school day, whenever I came to pick them up, there was always room to park right out here. I never ended up on the grass or anywhere. It's just a matter of coming in, parking. The interesting stuff, timeframe on that also was that I would park in the car, go in and pick up my child, come out, we'd get in the car and leave before most of the people that were sitting there lined up waiting to pick up my kids. So I understand the concern and marking the spots as visitor business problem.
That would be, yeah.
But I don't, I also don't think it's that big of a problem. I don't...
And that could be something that could be easily added, you know, after, if it becomes a problem. How do, I've got a couple more. From that back parking spot, if teachers or anyone is, are using those spots back there, I can see an easy access to a sidewalk to get to Browns River, but for folks coming to, walking to Underhill ID, there seems to be a lot of passing through the parking lots without sidewalk to get to Underhill ID. I guess they would walk... I guess they would walk down the Browns River sidewalk and use the two crosswalks to get to Underhill ID? Is that the hope?
That'd be the safest, safest. We're hoping that, as I said, that Browns River staff parks in the back because they have access to the back door, more in person than more than, you know, our ID parents visiting. Not have to get along or walk. The thing I was gonna mention, hey, well, you know, Joe had mentioned the training aspect of it. People will have to relearn how to use the drop-off areas that you cannot go there and beat your car, turn it off to go in. The teacher that this would really, they'd stay with your car and then if you needed to stay, you could use it as your spot. So that's retraining because now people are used to parking on the gravel and just, because there is no one else. Um, another thing I wanted to mention, um, talking about the bus drop-off areas, we're actually, I was missing that they are full buses. Sometimes the bus backs out towards the, they were wrong some a little bit, so those usually full. One last comment I had is I would, I'm a little concerned about the closing off of the exit out of the Brown River area for a period of time. And at forcing more two-way traffic in front of ID, now it is like someone here to go to the safety aspect.
I had a question on top of your question. So the five ID drop-offs, they're not in eyesight of the entrance. And so if you're saying you can't get out of your car, are you gonna let children go without seeing that it's actually their car or their parents?
So if, so the idea is that if you are gonna walk your child in school, you should go to the parking lot.
But what about picking up? Like how, how do you, you can't pick up a child if, if no one's gonna let a kindergartner go, assuming that that gray car is their car? And assuming the parent is, the parent in there.
Jericho, we had, we had the same issue, uh, when they signed their parking lot. And we started out with five staff members who were there. They had signed, they had signed and stated they did not leave their car, uh, drop off, pick up all of it. So parents would stand in the car, and staff members would then make sure that they didn't, that's how it was working. We usually have two people, but it's also, you know, standing by you, they're under pictures of the trees, you can have them in line to sign them. So with two individuals there, I'll give you the name, that's it. And probably, what happened, the parents of the younger children may choose to park and pick up their child. And like you, go with more of the independent, third, fourth grader who would, you know, that was in the car, it was kind of pitch. Most parents in Jericho would park, they would stand by their car so they could see that he was coming out and he was just.
So if we go with, I'm sorry, if we go with that, uh, the, the two-way approach, um, say, two-way to the flagpole, is that the? Kind of, that's as far as the two-way would go, right, two-way to the flagpole. I would, I would seriously consider eliminating those, say, four or six spots there to allow the traffic to U-turn around the flagpole. And not have to traverse all the way down through the parking lot around the loading zone to come back out, just as a. I think when those spots are unoccupied, that would, might be a natural way of coming back out if you're just doing a drop-off. And that might alleviate some of the anticipated congestion for the Underhill ID drop-offs who are, who are dropping off the Browns River. I know, I know you said there were two objectives here, one of them being to improve the surface, another one, expand parking. But we've been focusing on the traffic pattern as well, so it's, it's really three objectives.
Well, and walking saves, that's like.
Right.
But we're not having, I don't know, you've had walking, David, but Browns River has, right? Well, I don't have, I was, I mean, but the safety is school people was finding out that would increase safety features. So we also have to think that, um, their work is creating more safety features on the river road and on the theme. That we can have, potentially have a lot of workers coming from Grace Wayne, who had a lot more walkers. I, I have to say, um, and we do have some kids fighting. And I have to hear about that, we see at the library, if we increase the number of two-way traffic, might have to keep fighting in. They have more things to walk out for at the age favorite. Um, and if it was going in one way, some might go two-way, but people have those.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. One way around that loop is the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, I really don't like the two-way traffic. It makes it scary to drive, like even the two-way traffic on this side makes it, it seems like it should be a one-way loop that's easy and everyone's going the same way. No, but even around the Browns River parking lot, that two-way, like right here. I'm a big fan of one-way. It seems like it's, it's too traffic, especially with buses coming through.
This is, this is closed.
I know, but when people come that way and there are some dreams, they're going fast and it just is like, oh my God, something's coming at me. Like it's, it's such a natural thing to have it flow one-way. Maybe it's a lost cause, but it doesn't seem like, the amount of chaos you gain versus the fifty feet that you end up on this side versus that side. It seems like it would make a lot more sense to have it be a one-way street.
Yeah, I agree, I've been coming here for seven years and most people don't know that this is a two-way road. When I go the other way, most people freak out when they see the car coming. Yeah, it's a two-way road.
I know it's a two-way road.
Jim's impatient over here.
Yeah.
Somebody looked at this space, this drop-off space in front of Browns River Middle School, or five Browns River Middle School. You've got two-way traffic and then you've got twenty-one parking spaces right across from that drop-off area. That seems like a lot of activity in there, I mean, people pulling in, people parking, people backing out of parking, two-way traffic going by there. Seems to me like.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's about, it's a timing issue, you know.
Okay.
If we had all our staff.
This right here, which is one that way. And even this is, um, because it's drop-off, and you have to go and wait. Yeah, Browns River drop-off.
No, this is, this is.
So those twenty-one spaces will be occupied, people won't be pulling in and out of them until large enough.
Enough because they're late.
I think the feed, the feedback I heard from this side and maybe from this side is that if that, if that, um. If the traffic were one-way in front of the Browns River loading zone, you would still get, be able to get to all the places you need to go. It just, it seems like having that, both ways to get to that back parking spot seems unnecessary.
Talking about if you come up here, you can't get back in here.
And then you'd be able to move around the, maybe the loading zone. I'm not sure the benefit of having that two-way. Right, is there a?
So there's a gate there.
Probably more access to the background.
A lot of the other buses.
I'm sure it was, it was easier.
Cause they don't want parents just content to drop off here.
I mean, right now, that's a two-way, people drive both ways and it's not a big concern, concern, it's only in the morning. So if, if that access is blocked from seven to eight-thirty, then it should be just fine. And from my personal experience, traffic does move pretty fast, even on dropping kids and picking up kids. I mean, the worst case, you're maybe six cars there in front of you and you're just waiting there. It doesn't take more than, I don't know, sixty seconds to drop child off at any of the schools.
Right, any, I think.
Right, one more question, you said that the, if.
I have one more.
If we're, um, gonna be blocking off that route during the two hours a day and there's a gate, how would both buses, the handicapped and emergency vehicles get through?
I mean, there, there would be an annual crawl for it, it wasn't a serious suggestion.
I was just curious, cause I was thinking that if you were handicapped, you're not gonna be able to get out and.
Right now, there are too many cars pulling up to that sidewalk, letting their students out. And that's been a problem for as long as I can remember. And it hasn't mattered, they've been threatened with tickets, they have police out there, people will still pull up and think their child should walk that ten extra feet as opposed to getting out back here in this parking lot.
I don't, I mean, as a parent of fifth grader, it was never made clear to me what was okay and not okay for drop-off.
Same here.
I'm like, all right, sorry, I have no idea, I just followed the flow, so.
Yeah, even on, I think even the yellow lines or the yellow curves, which says no parking.
Well, we don't park, but.
You just slow the traffic.
Well, and having, saying one-way back here, uh, the exit on the other end, what happens when you get on the car that doesn't hit the exit only sign? Cause I was in a vendor vendor there because a car drove in the exit only. And it was, you can't, you almost have to create that culture of, no, you can't.
Yeah.
Or people will.
Accidents happen. So what, was it ever considered to widen the road where the new handicap places are and push everything a little bit inside? And let parents continue dropping off kids at the same place where they're now?
No, that, for me, that's a safety issue, no. It, it has to stop. You can't have buses coming through, dropping kids off, parents who are parking on either side of the road, having crossed the road. It's not safe.
Are you talking about on the school side or?
Yeah, on the school side, on the main road, basically widen the road and create a bus lane, dedicated bus lane and dedicated parent lane. And it's a one-way traffic.
Parents pulling up next to the sidewalk, you've got the buses trying to get into the bus from the area, they're holding on to the place.
I was wondering if in that, uh, side of the park, I wonder if there were drop-offs happening now. So on a practice fencing, you have, that my daughter's easier, my school, they have some practical fencing, that county, that's pretty good.
So where are we in this process and how, is this a first draft? Is where?
It is, yeah. And we're, we're, we're just seeking input from, from you on that, this guy, this guy.
No matter what you do, you're gonna get tons of conflicting feedback. I mean, I'm sure you know.
Why the new grass island? People just drive onto it, so I was just curious.
Uh, which one?
One in the grass.
Here. They assess the turnaround, make the, sort of turnaround.
Is it just because you don't want people parking there because it's hard to turn around around a car?
Yeah. The other, the other issue is that we have truck trailers that have to come in here. And so the design also has enough room for the wood chip trailers to come in, follow the traffic flow. And then they have to, um, come out where the Browns River drop-off is and then park back through the parking lot.
I'm gonna get myself for saying this, but it would be good to make that an area that it was very uncomfortable to park on. Because people just park on the grass islands. So I, you know, maybe it's not a big deal because the wood chip trucks are coming through at a time and it's not super crowded like after school soccer. But if there was a curb or a hole or a fence or something, because otherwise people will just park there.
And that's what would have to be done in front of the ID school on the opposite side of the, of the driveway. Because no matter what you do, you can't stop people from parking there.
Well, there's nowhere to park, I mean, I'm sorry. When you have to get into school, where are you gonna park a jolly, it's like, ugh.
I mean, when there's, if there's any activity, that space right here, it's used as a parking. If there's any activity in, in middle school, the space right here, it's used as a parking. I mean, I parked, I don't know, hundreds of times, that space, not on the curb itself, but the actual inside the field.
And there's no plan, there's no plan for fencing off those, those areas?
You have to spend money on landscapes in order to prevent parking.
Yeah.
So it'd probably be boulders or fences.
Right up to the.
Right up to the.
Road or whatever, pavement so that it's.
So you can scratch your car.
Yeah. And so that, you know, when you look at safe routes to school or safe routes for kids and, and how a car, since that's probably one of the most dangerous places where you stay out and cross that traffic.
I agree.
In the mornings, correct.
Just a question, uh, on timing again.
Yeah.
You said the, the whole school, uh, project would begin when?
Project, the project would be, if, if money's available through the, um, Mayasville, Union District, seventeen. It would be a summer of fifteen, nineteen to two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Those five spots are full?
And so the, what we would do is that we would take input from everybody this fall, um, after we've done the audit. And then we would start the process for, um, doing the plan and then engineering, or engineering with it. And then.
So as far as the feedback you've received from us, as splintered as it has been in different pieces, um, how, how best do you want to capture that? Or just make sure we have it in the minutes or?
I would say if it's in the, if it's in the minutes, then.
So do you wanna just, to wrap this up, do you wanna review the feedback you've captured to make sure everyone's comments are captured?
Well, I, I have not been capturing comments, I mean, I captured the overall scope of the project, but I didn't capture, I think, I mean, I heard a lot of comments about.
Well, in my head.
Traffic flow.
So let's say the, the, we had a lot of questions and comments, but let's try to bulletize the specific feedback. So I, I know we talked about, um, suggesting moving the student loading zone closer to the library.
On the Underhill ID side.
On the Underhill ID side, and the purpose for that was to.
Allow parents who are only dropping kids at Underhill ID school to follow the route and go.
Right.
And exit by Browns River Middle School.
So if, if it's a, if the loop is open, if we go with the open loop, one-way approach, then consider moving that loading zone back, I guess.
Yes.
But that would only be applicable if, if we go with that open loop. The other feedback I heard was, we don't like the two-way approach.
In the morning.
In the, just in the morning.
Yeah, in the afternoon, it's fine.
I like it, like, one-way all the time, so it's not.
One-way all the time.
You don't have to know when, you have to go this way or that way and.
General concern over two-way.
Yeah.
Attempt to avoid. And then I, and then I, I don't know how feasible it was, but I suggested if we do the two-way, to allow looping around the flagpole. Rather than going in, in through there. What else we have?
Parking spaces.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, that's the major thing.
We had some discussion about visibility into the loading zone, but that might have been alleviated through discussion. Okay.
Plus David is there every morning, so I just leave my kids with David.
It's pickup, it's pickup in the afternoon, he's there most of the time anyway, but, you know, it's mostly a procedural thing. Do you wanna commit staff members to distributing kids right into cars? Usually they're all there anyway, but.
Yeah, this is all visible from here, from the sidewalk.
Right, but if it's twenty degrees or if it's raining, people sit in the entry button, you can't really see it on.
There was.
Something to think about.
There was a suggestion for, um, visitor, um.
Signs.
Signs, and I don't know if that's UID visitor signs, but.
School board. Yeah, school board that can. Yeah, visitor parking spaces by the flag in the middle of the school.
And then a suggestion to look at the need for the two-way traffic in front of the ERMS loading, maybe that isn't necessary.
Definitely dangerous in the morning.
Yeah, concern over, over that.
I think one-way whenever class goes would make it easier for kids to look and go. You can't look both ways when your car's in front of you.
I think it's at different times also, a child, in that time. Or his, his, he's aware of that when you're sixteen years old.
They better be in school at that time.
Is there any, um, questions or feedback from our favorite tenant?
Um, I guess probably one of my tenants would just be rather than, who you think that parking lot, those are parking lots, because there'll be. It's just going to be, get ready in and be more happy to be in the parking lot. But that's our problem.
Well, it's, it's everyone's problem.
It's a valid concern.
It's certainly shocking.
Yes, but isn't, does this change that problem that much?
Oh, I think it does if you're going to drive all the way and then.
Drive around there.
Okay, yeah.
But if they did just around the flag.
Could be two-way out of the.
Like, just around the flag.
Would you send, would you really give that address?
Yeah, if it's sent in, Jen.
Yeah.
He's going to be fine. I don't like going back. I think this is.
Because the library closes this way too.
Okay. The next opportunity then, as far as I understand it, sometime this fall, once you can look at the audit and in some form or fashion, come back to this board with a modified plan for final, I guess.
It may not be just coming to this board, it may be a community meeting where library, it's just UID boards and members of the community, members in general. There are, because they got to use the parking lot, so.
Bigger.
Maybe, yeah, generalized.
Do you see any reason for this board to approve anything formally on, for this project? Would that be a smart thing to do, just?
I don't think it would anything now.
That needs to be part of.
I mean, there. Is it, you are?
We have two, we have two permits to get. One is through the zoning and development review board. And the other one is store water.
And I don't know what the relationship was between Richmond School Board and the Mount Mansfield School Board, but I just, I would think it would be appropriate from a legal perspective, given that modifications are being made to the Underhill ID footprint, that this board approve them, even though funding-wise, they're being done for us. But I think somebody would want that documentation.
Especially if you own, you own all the parking.
Ooh, you should start charging rent. Toll booth.
He should, he should have started with that.
Yeah. Oh, this dash line. I'll go to work. Easy pants, yes. UID easy pants.
To the baseball backstop. So it comes down here, across, then up to the backstop. So the most soccer field you own too.
In addition to that parcel, headlong parcel, backwards. Treasure. I have a question about the, so. I'm just thinking about this poor tree that's dying. And this, if we move this back here, like, we were talking about replacing the sidewalk or changing it because it's wonky anyway. Would this be a good opportunity to make it go sort of straight out instead of turning? And if it went straight out, then this could all back up more. Because I, this tree's healthy, this tree's healthy, that one's dying. I don't know if we could go right in between those two trees and just go straight forward. If we're going to replace the sidewalk anyway, and then it'd be easy to move the loading zone further toward where you could see. There's no reason it has to go around the corner.
Did you want to capture that one in there about the removed dead tree? Can you capture, can you summarize that for him?
Right now?
Yeah.
Change the angle of the sidewalk.
Go straight. Yeah. Go in between two different trees so that, so that you could move the loading zone to go right up to where the current sidewalk is.
This is right up here by the entrance.
And you have to remove these two trees?
This right here, so to manage the building.
No, yeah. They would have to remove those trees, yeah.
Oh, I see.
This is, it's right here. So right here, that it goes out and turns. But if it went out and went straight between these two trees instead.
That's probably why they didn't.
Then this whole slice could down further.
And you're saying these trees are dead?
No, those are fine, but the tree that you would mix would be this one, and it's, it's done. I hate, I love that tree, but it's, it's only got like a quarter of a size.
So you go right, right here.
Yeah, that may be an added cost. Yeah, 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 there might be.
But you wouldn't have to take these trees out to get this?
We don't.
Yeah, you would, yeah.
I would hate to take those trees out, but I'm just saying it might be worth studying.
That's why you'd probably put it all down in the corner.
That tree's coming out.
What tree? Oh, the dead one? That's sad. The kids are going to be sleeping there. You know what happened to it?
It's the, it's the roots, all around the roots. They're exposed and so, you know, the traffic, it's running around. The other ones, the other ones on the outside were all small.
Yeah.
All right. Any last minute questions or comments?
So just from a, so you're taking feedback right now. Your goal is to finalize the plan by when?
Well, if, we're sort of going to take feedback up and, up until we find out what happens with that, so we're continuing, we'll continue to take feedback.
Okay.
Through the fall.
It would be good if you could get one dose of feedback when people send that, like during this first.
Yeah, we only one, one set of plans here, so that they've had some. But we want to talk to people.
Great.
Great.
Mr. Elferdun said that our last board meeting there too seems people are very passionate about four cars a parking.
Yeah, we had some.
Yes.
And schedules.
Well, that's part of it.
Well, yeah, the calendar.
Calendar, sorry.
So really, it's June of next year that you would, you're going to go right up till June before, okay.
Yeah. We would have to have our design ready and everything to start the permitting process and then the engineering. So that would, we would do that a little at a time. The building would probably would get out early, probably two thousand and fifteen.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming by tonight.
Thank you very much for coming.
One of those with David.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That'll be spit. As I reviewed.
Sorry, I heard it.
I'm kind of surprised that they can do that.
Let's not do it like last time.
That's a big deal.
Because it's good, yeah. Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Seems like a pretty rough product.
It is, and boy, I have those happen, you know, when you come into a park, like, do you notice the vegetable parking?
Yeah, yeah. It looks like a war zone.
Yep.
And that makes it look so nice, regardless of the little pieces that are.
Yep. It's too bad they can't start right now.
Well, and I feel like we're the wrong, in spite of the fact that we drive through here a million times a day, I feel like this is a wheel that's been invented before. Like, the idea of traffic flow in school and congestion and carpooling lanes and whatever has all been done before in a million different schools. And there must be some visiting that can do it from other places instead of trying to think of everything that might happen to ourselves.
Yep.
I mean, I agree, the system as it stands right now is scary, you know? And I personally worry about the kids going from Browns River to Dover Rossing because they're crossing through all of that parking lot and all of the carpooling stuff and, you know, chatting. And, I mean, they do a pretty good job crossing on the streets, but, because there's a huge group of kids who go from middle school to library and then they get picked up by the parents from the library. And it would be nice to be able to get them through there without having to cross through the entire parking lot, but.
Well, the engineers, they look at plans and traffic flows and they should have little stickers, how, who would wear a lens, and then they can define. So all the people you mentioned, they definitely.
I'm just thinking, like, when drop-off happens, it's amazing how brief it is. You know, it's like a monsoon or something like, that all of the parents at Underhill ID who drop off, like you're saying, if they're on time, they take the bus. So it's really from like seven thirty-five to seven fifty, when all of the kids who missed the bus come and get dropped off. And with the middle school, it's very similar, like by eight o'clock, it's completely dead, and by seven fifty-two, it's completely dead. It's that one little crunch time where you need bandwidth.
So, good discussion. We'll have another opportunity to talk more about that in the fall. So we've got the Warren circulating around here. Item number, probably notice number two is the FY fourteen year-end projections. And if you had an opportunity to look at the administrator, administrations, administrators' report, there was a comment in there. I believe recommendation on how to proceed. Jen, do you have any more information on that? Want to paraphrase?
There's no more information on the specificity of the tax collection and on the amount of it, because some of it goes to here and some of it goes to here based on the individual and multiple different taxholding properties, which and percentage of which. But in this, so it will definitely be horrible, devastating. But the recommendation is to leave the two fifty to forty percent FTP or some instructional specialists at forty until we get the audit. Does that make sense?
We can make, yeah, so we identified another source of revenue for the year in tax sale. We think that's going to come in this fiscal year, meaning in the next week. And then that will help offset the increase in expenditures that we were trying to pay for through cuts in next year. Right? Okay, so a revised recommendation, if you will, based on the tax sale.
The revised recommendation is, you know, the last meeting, there was a list of seven or eight things. And everyone's going to go back and sort of make that and get it to, and as of this memo, my recommendation was not to do that because it looks slightly boring, okay? But I wouldn't, my recommendation is to weigh on two items, one of which is what we gave out contracts. There's two individuals that we decided gave them a fifty, we gave them a forty percent contract, just in the case that we would need to because of the deficit.
Okay.
Keep them there until we get the audit report, and I don't, I don't.
I didn't catch that part.
I don't anticipate that that will change. I think we'll be able to do that based on the audit. Audit at the end of the year.
Okay, so that's good news.
That's great.
Did anyone on the board, in light of that news, still want to discuss or make recommendations for changes to any of those items that were recommended?
Good.
You want to kick around the food service again? Okay, so. So then we'll let that one pass. We won't make any changes at this point. All right, who's going to give the update on the voluntary merger?
It's been a long time since we've listened to you.
Uh, yeah. Has it? I think we've had a couple meetings now. We had a meeting last week, we have another meeting tomorrow. We continue to refine the report. We've received all the feedback now from all the boards. Remember last, last month, we had that whole session, I gathered that feedback, gave it to the, kind of the core authors of the, of the report. All, all the other boards have provided feedback, fair amount of public feedback as well. I brought with me, and I, and I realized I could have just emailed it to you, but something that was shared with the merger committee a couple days ago was a, I guess, a letter to the, to Secretary Holcomb from a law firm in Montpelier that's representing Gail Conley. Some of you may know him. Talking really about concerns about the legality and benefit of this particular report that we, we sent out, so the draft report. So that was just shared with the board, no real commentary on it besides what it was. But that may already be published on the website. If not, I'll, I'll share that with the board for you to read. It's several pages of, of interesting legal opinion on the, on the process.
So Gail Conley has hired attorneys or he's with a group that has hired attorneys, an opposition group?
The first paragraph is the only information I have. My client, Dr. Gail Conley, asked me to review and prepare an analysis of the CESU merger proposal. As the merger process for Chittenden East Supervisory Union continues its march toward a vote to create a Mount Mansfield Modified Union School District, I foresee problems of submission size to question its advisability or authority. So, so that's interesting. It's from a process perspective.
Was it his wife that sent out the very thick, two-thick mailings that I got?
Yeah, I got two, yeah.
So what else can I tell you? We received feedback from the Agency of Education on the report. We worked through most of those comments last week. We, we stopped at article twenty, there's twenty-one articles, I think. Article twenty is where we ran out of time. That's the one about how we, how the new board would go about, or how the new district would go about allocating the incremental cost if, if a district chose not to be a member of the, of the union. A lot of feedback on that. It seems to be a very important article. And lots of questions about how best to write that. We got into discussion about the law governing how a supervisory union can allocate cost. So it's not just accounting standards, but there's also provisions in the state statute on how to do it. And of course, it's like new territory, that this has never been, this road has never gone down before. So that, that's what, that's where we stopped. And then we also have all the board comments to review tomorrow night. There's an additional meeting scheduled for July seventh, I believe, or July ninth, one of those, I think it's seventh. Yeah, right there. That's the final date in which the committee must agree to a final report and submit it in order for the timeline to fall into place for a November fourth vote. So we're still on track, but it's getting tight. Specific to Underhill ID, we made a couple changes. We did pick up one seat in the most current version of the report, so we had just one seat. And when we actually did the math and did the rounding, it said Underhill ID should have two seats. So one seat on the board moved from Underhill Center to Underhill ID. So Underhill Center has two seats, Underhill ID has two seats, Jericho still has the four seats. And of course, that opened up to the provision in the report that says what, what would happen to those now seats if the Underhill ID district were to be abolished? So one would move back to Underhill Town, one would move to Jericho Town. That opened up discussion about, well, which one would it be? Because one of them initially was a one-year term, the other one was a two-year term. So we made them both two-year terms so that they're the same. And, and now we have a disproportionate number of seats expiring in the second year, but we may have to fix that. But as, at the moment, there are two seats for Underhill ID. Both of them initially will be two-year terms, and then they change to three-year terms upon reelection. upon reelection. I would suggest that if there's board members or anybody from the public interested in running for those seats, assuming the report gets approved and we go forward with this, to pay attention to the dates. This district in particular, our clerk, Robert, will need to have available those petitions for people to get and for people to sign and for him to collect and then prepare the ballot. So we have a bit of a clerk job to do there. So hopefully, Central Office will help us facilitate that. But we don't have the town clerks to rely on, so we have to make sure we have those ballots out there. And.
And that has to take place in November?
Yeah, right.
So we have to, we have to elect the new board members and approve the merger.
Instantaneously, yes. Without question, that is written into the statutes.
Okay.
Yep. And there's two seats. And we're still, it's a 15-member board.
So we gained a seat. Someone loses a seat?
Yeah, Under, Underhill Central lost a seat. And of course, it's so close. It was like 1,700 in this district in terms of population and 2,400 in Underhill. So the rounding was just barely. So the next census in 2020, the seats could move around again. But in theory, it won't be a, you know, if this district dissolves itself when the, after the merger, then there will, you know, the populations won't be as volatile between the districts. So what else can I say about the merger? I, we had, we had the public comment session. Was that after our last meeting? So that was at Campbell's Hump. We had, I think you were, you were there, Jim?
Yes.
You were it? Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't have a quorum. I know there were probably 15 people there. George Till, no, Bill Frank was there.
Yep.
Provided some feedback about the UID in particular district wording.
I mean, his point was, it, it looks like it's targeting to close UID, but the intent of it is not.
Right. The wording can be misinterpreted to talk about closing the school versus abolishing the district. And his point was, make it very clear that in that article, all that article's talking about is abolishing the district. It has nothing to do with the actual school, the school building. He didn't think that was very clear.
Because I, you know, he said, this isn't going to pass the way it's written because people are going to say, well, you're going to close my school. I'm not going to vote because you're going to shut my building down.
On the other hand, they might vote for it for that exact reason.
People might vote for it just for that.
But really, they need to, it needs to be clear.
Regardless of what the intent is.
Yeah. And, and you know, the articles are, are, it's a pretty thick document. I think we would be fortunate if just some voters actually read, you know, the document. But some people are going to read it and then the message will spread. So it's very important for those people who do read it that it gets interpreted correctly. So for this audience, it's, you know, there's nothing in the report that expects the school to close or plans a school to close. We're talking about abolishing the district. And the actual articles and the statute says there's a four-year moratorium on any school closings without district approval. So that's written right into it as well.
What's the deadline? What's the date that you're going to submit the report to the state?
Let me get the timeline. August 1st. August 1st, we forward the final draft to school boards and Vaughn Ultimus, who will submit to Secretary of Education and State Board of Education for approval. Minimum four weeks. August 19th, submission of final draft to the Vermont State School Board. They're meeting at the Steakhouse in Berry. August 2nd, local school boards approve the warning for merger vote. So we will have to get back together sometime. We'll have to call a special meeting just to sign the warning for the merger vote. That, that would be on August 2nd. Or, yeah, it has to be on August 2nd. And then.
I missed something.
The 2nd is the 7th.
Yeah, that's, that's what the timeline says, August 2nd.
Oh, so we have to submit a warning for the vote in August. We have to, we have to submit a, we have to sign a warning in August. The warning will go out to announce the vote in November.
Correct.
So it's a longer than normal warning cycle, isn't it?
Longer than a regular.
Than a regular.
For anything from North Carolina, but I think that that is the warning, that we are going to do the warning, which then goes to the stakeboard event who approves ours. And then it comes back to us if there's a the or an and or an is wrong place.
Okay. I may not understand. I'm just reading in the timeline that was sent out. It says on August 2nd, local school boards approve the warning for the merger vote. On October 3rd, we warn the election. The petitions for school directors are available on August 2nd as well. November 4th is the vote for both the merger and the school directors. If approved, November 14th is the warning for the organizational meeting of the new district. December 18th, we hold the organizational meeting where we, where they elect chair, vice chair, all the duties of that first organizational meeting. And January 19th, adopt a budget. February 2nd, the warning for the budget goes out. February 23rd, annual meeting. March 3rd, budget vote. There has been some discussion about delaying the budget vote into April. That's the current draft timeline.
You said the petitions for the board seats are available on August 2nd?
Yes. That means our clerk has to make them available for members of our district to obtain. I do have questions about how they would go about obtaining them, given the school won't be open. He may, he may put them in the town clerk's offices, maybe.
Yeah, that's probably the best.
Maybe on the website.
Maybe you want to be standing in front of the school.
And what do you have to get, like 50 signatures?
I don't know.
Okay.
I know, I do know that there'll be two positions, and I do not know how those positions will show up on the ballot. If it will be vote for two, or if there'll be two different positions. And you have, you know, we've talked about doing it both ways. I don't know who makes that decision. Well, there's two positions, right?
They're both equivalent.
So I put, at the moment, they're both equivalent. So you would, you'd probably vote for no more than two, is how I would think it would be done. But all the other positions in the other districts, the term of that first seat is a different term. So they're different positions. So in those situations, there'd be two different positions on the ballot.
How are they going to do that if you're running, you actually run for a different position?
Exactly.
Like, I'm going to run for the three-year? No, I'm going to run for the one-year?
That's, that's what Underhill Town, they're going to have a one-year and a three-year position. So.
You have to decide. You have, you know, a different set of competitors for each of the, just strange.
Yeah.
Uh, that's awesome.
Or what if, what if you have in total?
Well, and how's that going to be on a ballot? Is it going to be, I mean, one it's in Jericho, one it's in Underhill?
Let's be glad that we don't have to worry about it.
So at the moment, we don't have to worry about it. We have two positions with the exact same term. So they should be grouped on the ballot.
In both towns?
Yes, because we haven't dissolved our district yet. So our district gets a, for two.
Same both towns.
It would be super convenient if the people who won were one from Jericho.
So should we just make a rule so only one can be from Jericho and one can be from Underhill?
No.
So that's the case?
No.
If both are from one town and we abolish the district, then that would be interesting.
Yes.
I would think they could grandfather themselves in until.
Yes. Live their house, went to another town.
Right now, it's written into the, the articles that if the district dissolves, those seats will be, the, the individual in those seats will remain in that office until the term naturally expires. And then the seats will go to Jericho and Underhill. Nobody has to move. Okay. So if there's no questions or anything on merger, we'll check off that item. So now we're back on track to item number five, administrators' report and board discussion. Did you all get a copy of the note?
Yep.
End-of-year school events, leadership training, physical plant, professional development, recommendations concerning the deficit, and Title I. Any remarks from?
I'm going to add something to the plan. And it is, we had talked about repairing the side hall thing around the school. And at this point, considering the case for the potential driveway renovation, recommend that this project be put off until that is done. Funds that will be, that will from the repair maintenance funds, you can bring that fund. You'll probably get cost savings having all done at the same time. And if the paper is not as nice of a transfer all in here and would, you know, allow you nicely. And also with Jessica's point of change the direction of the walkway.
Sounds very good.
Yep. So we still have a repair fund. Okay. Any questions for anyone?
The Title I, did you want to talk about that at all?
So Title I is federally administered money to work the students for poverty. And I would figure is they take all the students in the whole supervisory union, they do the percentage of children in poverty. And then that's about 17%. And then the school has a percentage that is higher than that. They get some of the Title I money until it's spread out between the schools. So this school in recent years has not been a Title I school. But based on our numbers this year, we are watching next year. We don't have a lot of students and we're just a little bit above that average as opposed to Smiley, which is about 40, or Campbell's Hump is about 24%.
So does that mean another school has been losing their Title I funding?
Oh, they're, yes, they're losing some.
And wouldn't it be nice if we just moved that person out? Or is that like, is this person going to be from existing staff or an additional hired person? Or is that clear?
That's a really good question. And we're right in the middle of figuring that out because we do have the board Title I seniority. And we're trying to make it so that people can be, they have to maintain their seniority so we will be able to hire them. We did have one person who was reduced here. So we hope that they, in this, move that person to our head. We're still working on the details of that. The good news is we have a little bit more money to add to that support. The individual does need to work openly with students from poverty. No, it's not like, okay, you got a red tag on your forehead if you do too. It's more they come in and with those trends, it's not noticeable, but it is.
All set? Okay, thank you. CESU committee reports. Policy?
I missed the policy meeting.
And there was not a forum, so I don't have.
Okay. Sorry about that. Just one of those, one of those nights.
Okay. I thought I would have a minute here to look at my notes from.
If you know you're going to miss it, it's always worth sending something out.
You know, I, I found out about three hours before.
Well, that's better than three hours after.
I know.
But three hours before, someone would be able to go.
Should have sent something out. Yeah.
I'm just saying for next time, worth a try.
With three hours to go, I'll just.
Yeah.
Okay, Executive Committee. John Alberghini provided his reflections on his three objectives that he had for their goals he had for the year. Formation of the Voluntary Planning Merger Committee was one. Number two was not just formation, but for him to provide support and guidance necessary for the committee to comply with the steps. His indication, we agree that he, he supported that quite well. We expand, he, he had a goal of expanding high-quality preschool options for eligible families in Chittenden East Supervisory Unions. We took credit for passing the law in Montpelier. Full credit, I believe. And then finally, support CESU member school districts and teacher negotiations. And he provided some indicative information around that. So that was presented. We also made the decision to renew his contract for, for two years after, after some discussion in executive session. We also looked at the year-end budgets for all the districts, as well as Central Office and Transportation and Special Education. Can you find the sheet here? In total, so they, they prepared this nice analysis where when, when we look at all the districts combined, that's a $43 million budget. And they're forecasting a positive net of $263,000.
This is Chittenden East?
No, all districts combined.
Okay.
So not just Chittenden East, Central, but all the districts plus Central Office plus the MMU district, right?
There's Chittenden East Supervisory Union, Chittenden East Schools.
Yeah, right. So I think I should have said yes.
That would be if, if we merged, that would be the budget that you're talking about.
Yes. And so they, collectively, we ran 0.6% under. So rightfully so, John was fairly pleased with that performance for the school year. Majority of that surplus is coming from the MMU SD school district, which hopefully will turn into.
New driveway.
New driveway. We, in Underhill ID, get the award for the largest forecasted deficit, which this did not put in our newly identified revenue source. But we were forecasting at this time $47,000 of deficit, second to Huntington's $44,000, Underhill Center $27,000 deficit, Bolton $18,000 deficit. Jericho had a surplus of $33,000, and Richmond a surplus of just $2,000. That's in expenses. And then revenues kind of offset that a little bit, actually significantly. They show us as a, as a 2.3% net overrun. But once our revenues get in there, we won't be the. But once our revenues get in there, we won't be the, the worst, hopefully the worst one on the, on the block. So I went through that. Lot more detail in terms of what's driving all the different central office items, but probably nothing significant.
Interesting, the numbers you posted, you just mentioned are almost directly proportional to the size of the school.
Yeah.
Like all the way from MMU down to Huntington and us, and you know, it's interesting.
The larger your budget seems the easier it is to deal with surprises, I think is the message there.
Yeah, keep having somebody take a maternity leave, a small school.
Yeah.
Which is a larger school.
Okay. So we also had an update, a third thing I'll say about executive, executive committee. We got an update from the food service department. What's his name?
Dave Warner.
Dave Warner, thank you. Lot of feedback was, you know, he presented kind of his, the state of the food service program. Lot of feedback about the, the positive feedback about the, the way the food program across all the districts is progressing. He, he mentioned how much, how easier it would be if he didn't have to run seven different school programs, so food programs. And administrative challenge of moving both food and people between these various areas. We had some discussion about why don't, what's stopping us from consolidating it? And I think ultimately, it's either Bob Fahey or, or John said, we'd have to, we have to be one district for, for that to work as effectively as, as they want it. Then there was some discussion about the, you know, fit, the nutritional aspect of the program. And the, and the fact that the rules are changing a little bit now where they can't offer the same types of sugary probably foods as they have this year. So that, so like the, the à la carte options in the middles and high schools will be a little bit different. And that may reduce demand. And then, and that spun into a conversation about, you know, how do we, how do we make it a level playing field between the, what the, what's coming in from, what students will bring in for, they can bring in any kind of food. And the lunch program can only offer, you know, the whole wheat and the kale. How can we compete when students realize that they're, they're, they can bring in whatever they want? So there's a whole, you know, lots of opportunity there to try to not just bolster participation in the food service program, but also improve upon what all students are eating in there. Whether, you know, whether, whether they're bringing it in or buying it, it should be healthy food was the sentiment to, of some of the people on the, on the committee. Some people thought it would be, we should pursue, you know, free lunch for all so that you take out the, the costs and you just make, when you come to school, you get your lunch. And you don't bring your lunch to school.
How will they pay for that? It's a potentially good idea.
Yeah. So a lot of discussion on the food service. We didn't make any decisions or anything.
Well, it's an interesting kind of political session about whether, I mean, some schools do have, I mean, private schools can have policies like preschools on this is what you can bring, this is what you shouldn't bring, senders get your snacks, you know, daycare can do that. Anything that's private, but do we have, I mean, we, we can certainly educate students on making healthy choices. In fact, which is, I don't know, I mean, we can certainly set nut free policies. I don't know if it's our place to set a policy for nutritional snacks. I mean, I know for years, my kids have been coming home and saying, oh, I can't believe that this person brings soda and, you know, really bad bags of chips and Cheetos and, you know, and that's, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's our, it's a really interesting question about whether it's, it's our responsibility or overstepping our bounds to say, please don't bring bags of artificial fruit to school.
Yep, you can't say that because some people, that's the only thing they can afford.
Right.
So.
And you don't want to know.
Which is why, if you make it.
You have to provide for free for everybody.
Right. That's what it like all comes, when you, when you play the scenarios, it's like the only way, not the only way, but a lot of those, those concerns get alleviated when you fall back to food for, free food, free lunch for all.
Everybody gets trees.
Yeah.
And I do think that the federal government may at some point ban certain foods from schools for kids bringing them in, you know, kids just feel like, now, any, there's a, like, just ban schools. That, that, we can't.
Wow, really? Boy, that'll be a fun thing to listen to, the debate about that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the federal government has already made policies, but it dictates what we can serve in our school. So that we have to serve appropriate grounds.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for us to do some brainstorm education at the beginning of the year on here are some great options for some healthy snacks that you can pack for your kid? And just list some things, some positive things, not like you, please don't send Coke, but more like, you know, this is baby carrots and goldfish or whatever. I mean, most parents know this already, but you know, it might be, sometimes you get stuck in a rut. I don't know if it would help to have a, a list of reason, like from the nurse or something like that.
And like the work that we've done, and there are the two schools that have done a little bit of research. And they said most of the children consistently break big poor nutrition, it's a, it's a process. It's a lot cheaper to buy bulk goldfish than type of fresh meat.
Sure is.
Didn't Underhill Central have a fruit only snack for a while? Because I, I mean, that, that was pretty strong. And that's definitely price, I mean, it's, it's hard by fresh fruit in Vermont sometimes, you know.
The standards are always changing. They're saying fruit. Obviously now, and like, so what is healthy keeps changing. Now they're saying it's carbs and that's, so it's for us to say, you know, you have to have only meat protein because that's what they're saying that's good for you. Or you can only have carbs, or you can only have, I mean, like, if you know some things that are bad for you. It would be.
You go into any cafeteria anywhere, you can have a heart attack for a buck. If you want to eat healthy, you know, it's gonna cost you.
That's great, yeah, exactly.
I have to say in my observations, what kids have lunch, there's always some food bringing them, you know, some others like that. I would say the majority of people are bringing even healthy lunches. And some that are appropriate, they help to ours, and some that are even higher. You know, I, I don't see it as an issue here, and there's a lot of parents saying, why don't they go try it?
And some people just like. Kid like mine, it's, it's very difficult, so.
If a few more of those students.
I do like the list.
If a few more of our students participate in the, in the school lunch, it would certainly help out us from a financial perspective. Right. So that's still gonna be a challenge for next year. All right, so that concludes my brief update on executive committee. Any update on any other committees? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The warrants total $489,190.81.
Thank you.
And I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, approved. All right, item number eight, our next meeting date. So I would, I don't, I, it seems from a merger that it may be premature to set a date. We haven't progressed through the, all the meetings to get to that point, or maybe we should?
Underhill Central said Tuesday prior.
The Tuesday prior?
29th July.
Can the central office support two meetings at once?
Rather than going out on Monday.
I'm on vacation Monday and Tuesday, so.
So you can, you can make either one?
I'm not in town.
You can't make either one?
I can't make either one.
You're here on the 29th, 28th?
Yep.
I'm here the 28th. Jessica Lauren?
I might not be here.
You might not? Might not?
I'm here.
I'm here after that, though.
I'm here on 30th.
30th?
After 30th, I'm here.
30th?
Yep, I'm here.
Lauren, 30th? No, for Lauren. Jessica, 30th?
Yes.
I'm here for the 30th, so the 30th it is.
And Jen, you can do 30th?
Somebody from central office will be able to support us. Should be a fairly quick meeting.
So 7:30?
6:30.
6:30?
Yep, 6:30. Underhill ID, July 30th.
And that is to approve the warning?
Yep, voluntary merger update. And approve warning for merger vote. And public comment, of course. All right. Move on to other business? Any other business?
And I, I never know whether I should give this to the administrator or not.
Too late.
So you need to take action on a change in the way we administer the 403B plans for our employees. And for history, several years ago, the law changed and the laws were pretty complicated. So CESU opted to go with a third party administrator. So if employees wanted to deposit money to their 403B plan, the district would hire the third party administrator who would then send it to the 403B plan. That costs a additional funding. Now, we understand the law, we have Sidney Mack who's read through it. We're changing it so that we are paying the 403B plans directly. And we're not using this, so there's two documents. One is the board resolution, and the other is the participation agreement. And the board resolution, the chair needs to sign. And the participation agreement, secretary needs to sign. And we have to do this with all of our, all the nine of our school boards. Do this, it is effective July 1st, 2014. On the date here, there's several different dates. And the reason discrepancy dates on some of the documents, this will be here for the third party people. And the agreement is, it begins the calendar year, and our this begins July 1st.
Any objections from board members to transferring the administration from third party to central office? But. Do we all sign? Or one, one signature?
Each of you choose to sign. I do need a motion in a minute saying the board resolution and participation agreements to restate the 403B plan. I will move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is approved. All right, so Jim gets the top one because it's signed here.
This is a resolution to change.
To restate our 403B plan. Board resolution.
We are 2014. Okay. That's for you to sign?
Thank you. Sorry about not giving you the time to read.
All right, so the only other item on my list was, you know, and I guess it's the end of the school year, not the end of the district year, but just wanted to thank David and Jen and, you know, for your support for the school board and also for everything you do for the school. I think we ended the year, at least as a parent. I'm pretty happy with, with my, my daughter's time here. And looking forward to having two students in the school next year. I don't know if you are looking forward to having two of my children, but the good news is that's all of them. But thank you very much for your time and dedication.
Thanks, appreciate all the words. Yeah, it's been quite a year, and we've all done a good job. And thanks for your support, both of you. Tough, tough, some tough issues to work through. But we did.
We worked through them all. Any final reflections?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's still laid out.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Me.
Aye.
Let's see, meetings adjourned.